Okay, motion open hearing?
Make a motion open.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First hearing tonight would be applicant Western LLC of North Reading, Mass. Requesting a special permit under section 8.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for Dunkin' Donuts and property located at 386 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., map 33 parcel 85. We have a motion open this hearing?
Make a motion open.
Second? All in favor? Okay. In case anybody is... Is there any way out there taping tonight other than the television show for Channel 3? Yep, we got you here. No? Okay. The applicant, your name for the record, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Chris Sporages. I'm a professional engineer with offices in Middleton, Massachusetts, here representing the applicant West Dunn LLC, which is the operating entity of the Dunkin' Donuts located at 386 Southbridge Street. And from the Dunkin' Donuts office in North Reading, with me tonight is Rosanna Francis. We... West Dunn LLC recently submitted a building permit application package for a remodel at this Dunkin' Donuts location. Every so many years, they're required by corporate to do a remodel at their locations, and it's usually interior. As of late, over the last couple of years, Mr. Scovranos, the manager of the LLC at other locations, has been incorporating a second pickup window where there is a Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through element. And the way the second window works for Dunkins is that, especially in the morning between 7:00 and 9:00, which is that busy period, if somebody comes in and orders a more complicated order, maybe a couple of sandwiches or a couple of dozen donuts or something like that, they would order and then proceed to that first window and pay for their order. And if they perceived it as a more complicated order that might take a few more minutes, they're going to ask that customer to pull forward to a second window and wait there. And what that does is that allows folks that are just getting a cup of coffee to continue moving through the drive-through lane, and it just helps the flow a little bit easier. And when the remodels are scheduled at these locations, Mr. Scovranos has us take a look at the site and determine whether or not a second window could be incorporated. And the proposal for the existing Dunkin' Donuts building, and I have a proposed plot plan here, it shows the property in its entirety. So I'll take a couple of steps back and just tell you a little bit about exactly where we are. We're on the accessory map 33 lot 85, right across the street from the Auburn Mall. This is a property that's just over two acres in size, and there are three existing buildings on the property. The Dunkins is out front, and I've colored that up here. There is an existing motel, and then a workout business that's in this third building here. Southbridge Street here and the mall across the street. This is the drive-through and the main parking field for the Dunkins. Behind the Dunkins, of course, there's the... Which isn't shown here, but there's a dumpster and some employee parking spaces behind the building. The proposal is to square off this front left corner of the building here, and what that's going to allow us to do is to add that second window right about here. The first window is located here, and about 30 feet away or so, that second pickup window would be located there. Now, the existing structure where the Dunkin' Donuts building is located is located within the 20-foot setback. It's just over five feet from the sideline of Southbridge Street, making an existing non-conforming structure. And in order to do an addition like this, the building inspector indicated to us that we have to file for a special permit requesting for an extension of that non-conforming structure. So we put together our application, and just to give you a few more details about the addition, it's about 4.9 feet by 12.7 feet, or just about 62 square feet. Again, its purpose is to accommodate that second drive-up window. There are no other proposed changes to the parking lot or the sidewalks, parking spaces, or anything like that. And so we believe, based on this information, that the building extension shall not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. And that concludes my formal presentation, Mr. Chairman, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you or any of the members may have.
Okay. Anyone have a question? I'll miss it all? Sure?
I frequent this establishment, sometimes a couple times a day, especially the winter when it's cold out. I like the coffee. It's great, don't get me wrong. But my concern here is that when the pedestrians enter the building and exit the building, they cross over that particular area to go back to the parking lot.
You're right.
And as far as safety is concerned, I'm wondering if the extension of that corner is going to affect somebody being able to walk in from the building to the parking lot safely with basically kind of creating a blind corner there? Certainly not against the idea. I'd just like to discuss it with the other members of the board and find out what their opinions are on that.
Actually, I agree with you on that issue because I've gone through the area that way, too, and it would be a problem, I think, for pedestrians for the second window because it'd be too close. And as he said, as walking through the parking lot, they walk right through that area, and your door is right around it, right there.
Well, I mean, I guess the whole premise of the little addition here would be to have a second window. So say if a car was moved up to a second one, I mean, they come to a complete stop. I mean, they're not just growing and grabbing, you know what I mean? So they're actually going to stop, whereas you get it from this window, you do continue on.
Okay.
I think...
But you have a little blind spot going out of the building. I mean, coming into the building, yes, you could see the car and the vehicle, but if somebody's coming around the corner, if you had that second window, how close is that second window from there to the sidewalk where the people are walking in?
Well, from the second window, you're only about... You're only from the center line of that second window. You're only about 10 feet away or so from that sort of paved, the brick walkway there. And there is an existing sign that faces the folks that are driving through the drive-through that says, you know, caution pedestrian crossing. There's a specific sign for that reason, you know, at that right up front there. We're not proposing, obviously, to take that down. One thing that we can do, and when we did our survey out here, we noticed that the striping sort of stops at the drive-through lane, this crosshatching here. You know, one of the things that we could do is we could continue that striping, you know, right across that drive-through lane to help sort of tell people, you know, that they... It's another sort of indication to slow down as they cross through this area. There's sort of a gap there with no paint, and it might be a good idea to add some additional paint there, and that might help, you know, draw somebody's eye, you know, to that location.
One thing I might suggest, if I may, is at one point, and it was not the fault of Dunkin' Donuts, it was more of the pedestrians, they kind of created their own little pathway to the front door, sort of in between the curb and the building, and maybe just some preventative landscaping to make them walk on the sidewalk that would push them sort of a couple of feet out to the curb more might be helpful.
I see what you're saying. Right now, there's a walkway, but what you're saying is it wasn't always there?
Correct. It was something that was sort of added by...
Sure.
Some natural use, I guess.
Well, yeah, that never ceases to amaze me, that folks are going to find the path, the shortest possible path to where they want to go, and that...
Absolutely.
You know, you can't ever figure that out sometimes. I mean, that's an interesting question. It does take, you know, it does take customers closer to Southbridge Street.
Yeah. There is a full curb there, though. There is a full sidewalk. So if we could just keep them on the sidewalk is what I'm suggesting. It might push them out that extra, you know, just two feet to keep them away from that corner.
Right. You know, I understand what you're describing there. I mean, something like that... Do you understand what they're describing, Rosanna? I can show you.
I'm not sure exactly what landscaping, but if there's something that we can do, certainly we'd like to get it.
Right. Just trying to think what would make the most sense. Landscaping plants, especially when you first plant them, they're pretty small, so people are probably, you know, likely to continue to walk through there. You know, I wonder if even some caution tape or, you know, something that we could put there to allow some of this vegetation to, you know, really take off, to really, you know... So if we were to plant some shrubs, like that's heavily vegetated, you know, across the front here, there's some nice landscaping. I don't think that the owner would be opposed to something like that. I mean, we'd be happy to take up those pavers and then re-landscape that area. By doing that, then, you're going to be sort of forcing these folks to come out a little bit further, so maybe, you know, some restriping is going to be in order.
I would definitely hope you would redo the restriping, too.
Right.
Yeah.
In other words, from the wheelchair ramp to the wheelchair ramp, that's what this plan is, you know, that's what it'd be looking for. And then eliminating the other striping to sort of keep people from that area. But something like that, it can certainly be done. Does everyone understand? I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Robert Tatro, I'm sorry.
Yeah. There's this red...
No, I agree with that.
...paver walkway, and the proposal is to take those pavers up and re-vegetate this area to force people to use the existing sidewalk along Southbridge Street, which would take them further away from the building.
Any other questions? Okay. Anything else? Were there any butters for this, or Adam, do you like to make a comment?
For the applicant, I'm Adam Burney. I'm the town planner and the director of development and inspectional services. I'm sure you folks all know who I am. I just happen to be here for another item, and I was unaware that you were looking to alter the driveway plan or the... I knew that you were looking to expand the building. I wasn't aware it was part of the drive-through. Drive-throughs are covered under special permit through the planning board under section 3922. So this is going to require an alteration to the special permit. If there isn't a special permit, it would be a new special permit because you're adding additional drive-through service?
Are they adding additional or just expanding the...
Well, they're expanding the capacity, so it is an alteration to the drive-through service. So because the drive-through pre... I'm not sure what date the drive-through existed as of...
It's been there a long time.
But this is an alteration of that drive-through service. I don't imagine that there's any issue with it. You're not lessening the stacking, you're not creating any issues, but I think as a practical matter, it's important that it go through the process.
Okay, but they still need our permit?
Yeah, and I'm not arguing that they don't need your special permit. They're altering the building in a manner that's required for the special permit.
So you're thinking they have to go through or at least present it to the planning board, they can either say it's minimal?
The planning board can't waive a hearing on a special permit. They can waive a hearing on a site plan modification or on a site... They can waive anything on a site plan. They can't waive the hearing on a special permit. And I think that because this is a new drive-through facility or an expansion of a drive-through facility, it has to be seen through that process.
So I'd like to...
Sure. And again, I was... It comes from the mic because they want it all.
Sure.
You know, so I would argue, you know, respectfully, because Adam's been very helpful, you know, helping us apply for the waiver from site plan review requirements. We're scheduled to appear before the planning board next Tuesday. But for the second drive-through window, it's not a second lane or an additional drive-through. It's just something that's intended to sort of mitigate, to help mitigate and move folks along. Most of the time, that second window isn't used. It's only, you know, for that short period of time when we know it's really busy, and that's usually between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning. Otherwise, it's really not even... It's not manned and it's not used during other times. But we've... Mr. Scovranos has found that it just helps move the cars through the drive-through a little bit faster. It's not a huge... It doesn't make a huge difference, but since they're remodeling, they're trying to fit these second windows in in order to help that flow of traffic in the morning. I don't know if...
I got a question for Adam or for Nick. Now, isn't it the bylaw that says a development requiring a special permit? Is this... This is really not...
Drive-through facilities may be authorized by special permit from the planning board. For the purposes of this bylaw, drive-through facility is defined as any portion of a building from which business is transacted or is capable of being transacted directly with customers located in a motor vehicle during such business transactions. Now, the planning board's position historically on drive-throughs has revolved around adequate stacking, not interfering with the public way. I think that this is a beneficial upgrade. I don't think that this is... And I don't want you to think that this is a way to stop this. I actually think the planning board will look at this positively. I think you have the opportunity Tuesday night to sort of broach the subject with them, to identify what their feelings are on it, and to possibly have the permit issued for the beginning of the construction with the understanding that you do need to finalize the special permit process with the planning board. I don't want to hold this up. I think it just is important that for your protection and the town's protection, that this process be seen through. And again, I think that your point of this actually expediting the movement of vehicles through the drive-through lane is a huge positive for the planning board, and I think it's a very good reason for them to see to modify this. But again, I would be remiss if I didn't register my desire that it just go through the process because it does. Again, it protects your client, it protects the town. That way, everything is above board, and there isn't anything, you know, that way you don't get halfway through construction, somebody says, oh, no, they didn't do this. So that's my only concern. And again, I think that it's possible to stay on the same trajectory that you had before because even going through the planning board Tuesday night, if we get a filing together next week, you're looking at probably late March, but with construction and all of that, I don't imagine you're looking to have this drive-through open middle of April. And I don't want to hold you to anything, but I guess I missed...
As far as the construction schedule goes, that would be our only concern because they wanted to move forward with the remodel. They're getting a lot of pressure from Dunkin' Brands on remodels, so, you know, as long as it didn't affect, you know, that process and it was a modification to an existing permit, if we can find that permit.
I'd like to hear from you, Nick.
And that's something that we can look at. Again, I was unaware that this was going to be a new drive-through window. My understanding is it was additional workspace behind the counter, so that was why I didn't bring this up to you previously.
I just, just to make a distinction, I think...
Could you go up to the mic, please?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Rosanna Francis. Just to make a distinction, and we obviously respectfully, you know, just, it isn't really an addition or new drive... A new window in that regard. Like McDonald's, for instance, they have two windows. The way they use it, this isn't the way we're using it. We're using it differently. It's only for certain customers who have longer, you know, orders that are going to take longer that need to move forward. So to Chris's point, half the time, probably most of the day, won't even be used. So I guess that's why we feel like it's a little different than just, you know, than a new... It's new only for, maybe for like part of the day, but not for the entire day. I don't know. Just wanted to make that point.
I was going to say, that's correct, but also, we can review the building plans and what that's being used for, but either way, this is still going to be the first step in the process.
Right.
Because without the zoning board granting a special permit for the extension, nothing else matters.
Right.
You know, if you guys vote not to approve that, then it doesn't matter whether it's a drive-through window or not, they can't build. So right now, you know, it's the decision of the zoning board whether or not we are going to allow the...
Right, and it'll be, you know, you'll make your decision on where it needs to go.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Okay, were there any other butters for this? No other butters? Okay. Motion to close?
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Now, is there a motion that someone wants to approve or...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any conditions? Anything like with the...
I believe the... Just the ones that wanted to have something to do with landscaping.
Landscaping.
Landscaping and marking, paint markings.
Marking, okay.
That we had discussed with them.
Okay.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. We have discussion, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? No. Unanimous. Excellent. Okay. Motion to open the 7:15 hearing of Andrew and Claire Boschetto requesting a special permit under section 3.2.2.10 and 9.3.12 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the construction of an in-law apartment on the property located at 58 Pinehurst Avenue, Auburn, Mass., map 10 parcel 173.
I'll make that motion.
And this was continued, it says, from 11713. And I don't know why it says that there. Obviously, that's a typo. Okay, is the applicant here? Come on up. Tell us about... Give your name for the record here.
Yes, Claire Boschetto.
Okay. Okay, you can tell us about what you're looking to do.
We're looking to add a small apartment adjacent to our existing house attached to for the purpose of my parents moving in with us. My father was handicapped, and they're having a hard time living on their own, and with the extra support of having family right there would be very helpful to... For them to live, have better lives, years of their life left, basically, and be able to enjoy themselves instead of having to worry about the house that they currently own and the bills they have to pay and all that kind of thing.
Okay. Now, on this plot plan that you provided for us, I mean, did someone just pencil in that 17 feet? Is it 17 feet?
I believe, yeah. Yeah. 24 by 17.
Okay. Is there 17 feet that actually... Has it been surveyed out to show that it won't go into the setback?
Yes, actually, there's an existing deck that we actually have on the house, which is, I believe it's 12 feet. And we do have a surveyor's line on... We have a driveway right next to that, and there's a surveyor's line right there that we were able to measure to, and we're well within the 10 feet of setback.
Okay. So this drawing on this plot plan, did an engineer draw that on here?
I'm not sure which drawing that you're referring to. I apologize.
Okay.
I got that from right here at the town hall.
Okay, I think we might require, in my opinion, because just we've had people build decks and things that were over the, you know...
No, I can understand, absolutely. Yeah, well, my neighbor had put up a fence just, I want to say, maybe two years, and so that they had it surveyed and they marked. All right, we have basically a shared driveway.
Yeah, I think we need something that's going to show us where your actual 17 feet is going to end.
Okay.
But someone with a stamp has got to put their name on it and certify to us that it's not within the setback.
Okay.
That's just, you know, one issue here. Second issue, it's going to be 810 square feet? Is it going to be two stories?
It is two stories. We do not have enough room to make it one floor, so we do have to put the bedroom upstairs.
And what do you have for your... What do you have? Is the percentage... How big is the main house there?
It's a good question.
Okay. Yeah, I think we need a couple of answers on some things.
Okay.
If you read the bylaw, okay? Basically, it's a percentage of the main house when you do an addition.
Okay.
It can't be more than 20%.
Okay.
So 800 square feet, 810, unless your house is somewhere around 3,000 square feet?
Right, that's basically what my understanding was why we needed to do this is because, I believe I was told, around 700 square feet was going to be what was allowed, and so we were told we had to go through this process to see if we could get...
Yeah.
The variance for more area.
The 700 square feet is within the building?
700 square feet is the limit of the size of accessory apartments.
Except, and then it's 20% if you're doing an addition of the main first...
The addition can only be 20% of the main building.
And you exceed both those criteria there?
That was never explained to me when I put the application in. I apologize that I don't have that information.
Okay, I mean, something like that, rather than a special permit, now we require a variance from... No? If you want to go through that, Adam?
Well, I think that there's two ways it can be done. They can vary from, and I would defer this to Nick because ultimately it's his decision, but it would be a variance from the accessory apartment section...
Right.
Or it would be a two-family.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you can go two-family.
And essentially, what we've done in the... Prior to this bylaw is anything that was a separate housekeeping unit was approved as a special permit for a two-family. And I understand that that's...
That could be done.
Not the way some people would prefer to go based on...
Banking and appraising, yeah.
Well, based on, yeah, based on certain things.
Yeah, a lot of issues on it, which put the two-family on it.
But it is a certain... It is an option that would eliminate the variance and would put it back in the special permit ballpark.
Nick, did you want to comment?
Yeah. And just looking at this, when we were going through the process of deciding what we were going for, the reason why the larger size was even included on this was because of the dimensional areas that we need because of the physical capabilities of the people that are going to be moving into the apartment. It's not because the applicants just want to have a bigger place, it's because the actual size requirements to get the hallways wide enough and the stairways wide enough to actually function in there and make it a comfortable living space as opposed to building something and then having it be cramped because you can't move, you know, the different equipment around that's needed.
Yeah, and then, let me ask you, because I'm pretty sure the lots, the lot size comes into also dimensional-wise, that it has to be conforming...
Yes.
Before this can even be granted either way. Well, at least on the special permit for the in-law. Why is that?
There's no lot size requirement for the in-law.
No, not a lot size requirement, but I do... Does it say it has to meet dimensional regulations?
Yes, it has to meet the setbacks, it has to meet, yes.
It has, no, but for, I want to say for size, it has to be a legal lot, a legal building lot. Can't be, in other words, you can't, if it's in the zoning, it's 20,000, you can't have 10,000 and put an addition on for an in-law.
No, correct, but this meets, this does meet the...
Okay, frontage also, though, right?
Well, frontage, it's an existing nonconformity.
Correct. Let me just look at the bylaw.
I think it would qualify under section 6 for modification of an existing nonconforming.
It might be under that.
If they stay within the setback lines, which it sounds like they're able to, they can modify a single or two-family without need for additional approval.
Okay, let me just get there. Okay, the lot in which the single-family house is located, this is for the criteria to... Must meet the minimum lot size requirement and must comply with all other applicable zoning requirements for its district. That would be 9.3.12.3 under C. So if you have a lot that doesn't meet all the requirements, you need some sort of waiver or variance from that also.
Correct, so it would just be at this point, we could, you know, if the applicant was inclined to...
I'm just putting this out because you need a lot more to do to bring this through.
What we can do is we can ask for this to be continued till next meeting, and then I can sit down with you and we can go through...
Okay.
The zoning book and determine exactly which items we need to request.
Absolutely, that would be wonderful. I've never done anything like this, so I would just say...
No, no, it's quite understandable, and this is new to all of us, too. We haven't worked with this a lot, but going through it, and I took your application, I came up with just a lot of things that just didn't meet it. So if you'd like, I mean, you can ask us for a continuance. We'll be happy to give you whatever time you need.
Yes, would you like a continuance?
Okay, would, till next month be okay for you?
That would be great. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to continue.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second? All in favor?
The zoning board.
So this will be the third Thursday of next month. Does anyone have a calendar here?
I have it right here.
Okay. But, yeah, but we'll be in the other room, I believe, for that, for that date, correct?
Close.
Yeah, I think this is being used, but we'll
March 21st, yeah.
And at this point, I guess we could put you on first because I don't know if there's any other applications in it at this point, but it'll be continued to that date.
Okay, and when I call to make that appointment, who do I ask to?
Ask for, ask for myself, ask for Nick.
Nick? Okay, thank you. Great, thank you very much. You have a card?
Okay. This will be, this will be the continued hearing.
Right here, it's fine. Say that again?
This will be the continued hearing.
Yep.
Sheila had this wrong here. We'll just put this right here. Okay. Then we're going to reopen the hearing for Cumberland Farms Inc., 502 Washington Street and 82 South Street, Auburn, Mass., requesting the special permit under Section 3.1.1, 3.2. 6.2, and 4.3.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the operation of a convenience store with gasoline sales, map 57, parcel 85 and 86. And the applicant is here?
Yes.
And again, your name for the record, please?
Thank you. My name is Phil Lombardo. I'm the attorney for the project. And with me tonight are Paul Wilson from Cumberland Farms, Phil Henry, our engineer, and Maureen Schlebeck, our traffic engineer.
Okay. You can continue what, from what we were talking about last month.
Thank you. I think that we, we were under the impression that we left with one issue which had to do with the driveway and taking a look at alternatives for that driveway access. You folks had expressed some concerns vis-à-vis the possible queuing at that driveway. And at your request, we did go back to management, we studied the plan, and we, we come up with an alternative. Frankly, we think the plan as submitted is our best plan. Our engineers are hired to do, to design a site that they think is the safest, and frankly, the company does its best when its site is safest and most accessible. But at your request, we did study moving the driveway, and we had an alternative plan done that shows the driveway moving back by 20 feet. So I'll let Phil describe that particular plan to you.
Do you have a copy of that plan?
Yeah, we were just going to ask you, we, he could show you on the easel, but he also has 11 by 17.
Sure, if we can get copies of that or move that closer, whether they
Yeah, both, I guess. Happy to do it.
And you said you move it 20 feet?
Yes. And Phil will explain the constraints as to, as to, you know, moving that driveway back. Did you have the thing to hand out?
May I ask?
As a preliminary matter, while he's doing that, there was a question about the height and the compliance of the, of the proposed building with the, with the height dimensional requirements.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we went back and looked at it, and we, we're fine with that. The height measured to the easel, we were well underneath that.
Okay.
We would just ask the inspector to confirm that.
And I believe you have a memo for me regarding
See, yeah.
I thought we cleared away that underbrush while he was handling it. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Philip Henry with Civil Design Group out of North Andover, Massachusetts. We're the civil engineers for this project. May I, may I bring this
Sure, that'd be great. Over here closer would be great for us.
If you want.
You just need to be able to be heard on the microphone.
So the plan in front of you shown here is, is the estimate. I just want to kind of walk through that again and then walk through the revised access that is moved 20 feet further back. This, this proposed access here is consistent with the fact that it lines up with the Frank and Nancy's driveway right across the street, so I'm just going to draw a line rate with my ruler here. And as well as, it winds up with, you know, with the internal access drive, which is typically a good practice, so. However, with that said, and in the spirit of our discussion, you know, we, we took a serious look at the revised option, which I've just handed out, which depicts a, the access drive moved 20 feet further back north for the equivalent of connection cost. So, and what we found, you know, what I, what I have here is I showed a car in a position in a snapshot moment in time, as the car moving, turning, turning left into the site. What is that car facing? And as you can see, the, you know, the car is lined up with, you know, with the landscape island. So, you know, can, can that car, you know, maneuver left? Yes, but it's, it's less than a right-hand wheel situation, in our opinion. We prefer to maintain the as-is due to internal site circulation and, you know, normal good practice with, with the drivers across the street, et cetera. So we also ran this, this, this access drive by the planning board, and it was, it was met with some advantages and disadvantages, right? I believe, you know, planner can speak for himself because he was obviously had the planning board meeting. There were some ideas floating around between the as-is plan and this 20-foot plan, but I think it's safe to say that the planning board can certainly live with the as-is or the, the original proposed access drive location, so. From our, our last discussion, really centered around the, the location of this access drive, so we happen to answer it.
Yeah, and before Phil finishes, the, the further, the further away we move the driveway from the intersection, the more exaggerated that maneuver becomes. And that, and so it became kind of a sliding scale, and it was determined that 20, 20 feet was about the maximum tolerance to, for that, for that, for a safe maneuver. We, we don't mean to imply that it's an unsafe situation. We, we just mean to imply that we, we felt, our designers felt, that it was optimal the way we had it, you know, lined up with the driveway across the street, which is what you always try to do, and created a better site geometry coming in. You know, we, we mean no disrespect, we did take that seriously, we did have that looked at by Phil, the engineer, and by Cumberland Farms Management. And so that's, that's where we are today.
I believe what we were talking about, and the main problem was, at that light, the queuing, okay, people are stopped. They can't, the driveway gets blocked. Now, someone comes off of Route 20, the first car can't, stops here, okay? The second, we've had, and I lived there going 30 years now on South Street, so I'm going to give you a lot of experience. It stops here, the second car stops. The right lane of Route 20, who wants to, has to stop on Route 20 because this is queued up and you can't make a left. And I was particularly concerned because it wasn't as bad because you had an open driveway here, because it wouldn't make sense to try to maneuver a right then a left when you can just keep going straight and enter the property. Okay? Now, and I, I guess, in, in, in your world, less, having one less egress or, you know, excess would better down here. In my world, it means people are now more, more apt to make that right-hand turn and left-hand turn, just because, again, it's this phenomenon, it's the closest way is what people take. You can put a do-not-parking sign by your door, and because it's the closest spot to that door, people are going to park there. I mean, it's just human nature, and you don't get human nature in your books, okay, and how people react to these things. So, I mean, I've seen many jams right there. I've seen them all the time.
I do, too.
I like to hear anybody in the board. I mean, it happens now.
Thirty years, and I know.
And, and that's with, the original planning board actually angled that entrance, if you see it, so you can't, trucks and everybody cannot make, they do anyway, they'll go, you can see
They go right over it.
They go right over it. Our, our plan, our hope, was actually to bring this back even further so your trucks that were going to align will go right to a, back to a loading space, which, in my opinion, would give you conform order 6.4 of our parking bylaws where the loading zones should be. And then you have a long queuing here. You'd have to have many cars queued, so that would block that driveway. Right now, two cars blocks the driveway. And that's the way it is right now. And expanding it wider, I don't see how you're mitigating that at all.
I agree.
No, okay, no, no speak to it. I, you know, that's, 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 that was our take on it. There's a problem at that intersection now, and does this new development fix the problem? I, I, I don't see how. Unless you have no left turn on this, this driveway.
If we, if we could, Maureen, our traffic consultant, has something to say about the, about this.
Thank you. Maureen Schlebeck from McMahon Associates, we did the traffic study for the project. In the PM peak hour, the queue on South Street, southbound, does extend to the driveway. In the AM peak hour, it does not. The queue length on average is 50 feet, which is about two cars, and that does not block the driveway.
The truck internal, the tanker truck?
Yes. And I'd also like to just walk you through the tanker truck delivery booth. We have a tanker truck showing entering via the Washington Street driveway. They circle the site north clockwise, the tanks are over here, this is where they will come back out, exit the site, and leave it on the left turn. So we're able to keep them off of South Street driveway.
How are you going to keep trucks from making the left there that still do it now?
Yes, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we control the fuel delivery trucks. Those are controlled by Cumberland Farms.
Okay, but what about, your bread delivery truck, your soda delivery truck, they all use that exit?
Yeah, we, the, Paul, you can speak for yourself, but Cumberland Farms can restrict those vehicles and explain to each one how the deliveries are going to work. So any truck coming in and so forth is instructed to come in only on, on Washington Street, not in South.
It's also worth mentioning, when they're getting the other deliveries, they're using smaller trucks. The largest truck that was this site really is delivering the fuel, that's really the one that we concentrate.
I mean, it's a difficult site to work with. I mean, unfortunately, delivery trucks, they park right in the middle of the, of the lot. I don't, and I guess that's where you still plan on having them do their deliveries, is in the front of the building, where the parking spaces are.
Well, the
We could also designate the area for, for vehicles to load on outside, so, some, you know, feature that was not available in the physical conditions.
And the, the bulk of the, of the deliveries tend to be the vans, smaller trucks that deliver the specialized items. The larger trucks can be certainly told, be told where they should go, and again, they can be restricted in terms of their, how they're going to access the site.
Anybody have their comment?
I'll just stick to my comment from last meeting.
Which was?
I mean, I think we did say, if I remember correctly, and I could be wrong, is that we had recommended 40 feet at that time. Now, your 20 feet that you're, you're talking about now, I, I do not go with the first plan at all, in my personal opinion, because, like I said, I lived here for 30 years and I know the traffic over in that area, and I disagree with the traffic report. But if you're going to move 20 feet back, are you moving from the beginning of the curb cut, or are you going to do it on a second curb cut, 20 feet back from here, or 20 feet back from here?
Well, it's 20 feet from the curb cut that we had. So
So, I mean, I mean, it could be, it's 20 feet depending on where you measure it, so but to, I want to
So from the curb cut, that's next to the light, this is what I'm concerned about.
So, so, so this, this radius right here, so for instance, this, this is the as-is, right? So, so that inside radius is right here, this, this curb cut in this plan is 20 feet back. So if you were to measure that radius from the proposed radius, it's 20 feet. So the matter is measuring from, in that point, or the 70-foot access drive from the far radius?
I'm sorry, but I can't see it from here.
See, the thing is, is with
You're not around 20 feet.
Okay, okay, so here's, say there's one curb here, and then this is the other curb that's
See, I know.
Exactly. What I'm saying is, are you going 20 feet from this curb or this one back? That's what I'm trying to get. So you're going from this one, not this one?
No, this one, this, this, this proposed curb is substantially in the same location as the existing curb.
Oh, so, ah, okay. That's right.
So we're going 20 feet back from where it is
Yeah, but you're still having that curb cut open right there at the light. You're not, you're not moving that at all. That's what I'm trying to get.
No, they are moving it 20 feet.
No, it's same.
It's 20 feet further back from today.
Right, where it is today.
Because of the proposed Yeah, because of the proposed curb, but it is substantially in the same location given.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
So you're
That is your question? I want to make sure that, that your question's answered, because
Um
that it is moving back.
A little confused with that.
No, I don't want you to be confused. We want to, we want to make sure
The only thing is
Can you explain all that again now that everyone's out of the way of the drawing, whatever you guys, just start from scratch, what you guys were
This is going to be here.
Because we couldn't see.
The curb cut before the, before the light, are they going 20 feet from here to here, or are they going 20 feet from here to there?
Correct, no, from here.
Oh, so they're doing what I think.
Right.
So that doesn't serve my purpose?
So, so the existing
Now, I, no, I understand now.
So if you
No problem. Please.
So the, the existing curb is, is located right here, okay? The, the initial proposed curb is substantially in the same location. It's almost identical, you know, more or less a few feet. The, the proposed, or the 20-foot further back curb cut is essentially 20 feet further, well, it's exactly 20 feet further back than the original proposed plan, which is also 20 feet further back from the existing curb.
Yes.
But that's not the one you want, right? You want to go back to the original one? Well, we, again, we've indicated that our preferred design is the one we came in here with originally, but we've, we've shown you the 20 feet. We don't think that's unsafe. We think, if we had to, we could live with it, we'd rather have the original. But, but we, you know, again, in response to your comments, we wanted to move it back as far as we could, within reason. But once we get past that, we become concerned about the site geometry. It doesn't line up with the driveway across the road, and it doesn't line up well with the curb, excuse me, the parking spaces in front of the store. So 20 feet was about as, as far back as we could go.
So, so an approved, so, so a car coming right or up South Street and then making the left today, you know, has to make, you know, a circular movement to get back into the access drive on site. Anything further back would be continuing to exacerbate, in our, in our opinion, that issue.
Can I also add something, please? At this time, when, when we heard the zoning board's request at the last meeting, the town professionals also came back and took a second look at these plans also. We did hear your concerns regarding safety and the locations of the driveways. You do have a letter from the DCG, which is the town professionals, we, fire department, zoning board, planners, DPW. We had Bill Coyle, the director of DPW, weigh in on this, too. We've all looked at this, and from the different aspects that we've seen and the different options, this seems to be the best possible solution that we have. We're not saying it's great, we're not saying it's perfect, but the ones that are there and the other options for safety and other aspects, this is the best one that we have. Also, our town engineering consultant, Graves Engineering, has come back and said that they accept this location entrance as adequate and safe.
With no due respect, a lot of your town officials don't even live in our town.
Correct.
And, you know, we live here all the time and we see this.
I, I drive that road 20 times a day.
And I've continued seeing this for over 30 years.
And I, and I And I understand that, but in, in your 30 years, my, my question is, is yes, you've seen that driveway. And when we do these studies, when we look at this, yes, there are individual aspects to each study. However, from a general population and the way that these roads are configured, we look at this from a general standpoint. If we were to specify each specific road and entrance, we wouldn't have any type of design parameters, and therefore, everything would be in chaos. The reason why we try and line up driveways, the reason why we have these design parameters, is to make things consistent and safe. And once drivers understand that they are consistent and safe, they get used to the drive pattern, and then they're able to access it safely in the way that it's meant to be.
Understood. And I, the only one comment I want to make is, if you even go to the next street corner on Southbridge Street, I mean, South Street there, where next street corner on Southbridge Street, I mean, South Street there, where the sandwich shop is, have you seen how many curb cuts that were allowed there in probably a thirty foot length? Okay, you've got one from, that used to be the car dealership. You've got two on the, you have another one that's right next door that goes to Fuller's. You've got the street that's maybe ten feet within that. You have to come down there when there's, at, at, at busy time. These, it looks like the same people developed Kelly Square in Worcester, where you have seven driveways converging on one area.
Correct.
It's total chaos. And this is the same boards that, that okayed those things. So, I, I look at this with a little bit of, I want to look at it myself, only because they approved chaotic curb cuts that were, don't make any sense.
Correct. And that's, and that's why when we do these redevelopments, we look at these and we try and close down curb cuts and, and make them line up. Because before, there wasn't as much regulation. We didn't have as much study aspect. Now that we were able to see that, having, you know, numerous curb cuts in a defined area is not the best practice. That's why we try and reduce the amount of curb cuts, and we try and line them up, so that we can, don't have conflicting turning measures.
I mean, the only curb, I was hoping, and I think this is the board's thought when this came through, that they were expanding the property, they were buying more, that we could make that situation better. Okay, it's a bad situation. It's, it's always been that way because of that left-hand turn, and because of the queuing. And, and the only really, I, I, maybe I just don't understand queuing, but it would make more sense if you moved it down, more, more cars can be queued, so, so two cars don't just create a traffic jam. You know, if one, one, one of the two take a left, and that's, that's what happens in that inter, that little intersection there. I mean, we were just hoping to make it better, since, since other properties were being purchased, and it's, and it's a bigger lot.
No, and I, and we, and we understand what the board was trying to do. And, and like I said, we, we all looked at it, and, and the aspect is, is that while, yes, moving it back twenty feet might make it a little bit better, turning off of Route 20, it creates a numerous effect of unsafe conditions within the parking area. And to weigh those against the both, I mean, now, now we're talking about pedestrians going into an automatic turn situation. The people that turn into the Cumberland Farms now have to do an immediate turn as soon as they get in, instead of being able to go across the main drive aisle. It, it creates a-
I understand.
More of an unsafe condition than it doesn't by keeping it-
I understand, but I mean, really, our, our responsibility under the, under the special permit is, is where it, how it, where it meets our streets, our public ways. And that's where we, we kind of look at it. At this point-
We're also here to protect our citizens, too, and our residents.
Oh, absolutely.
That's why we're, that's why we're having such a hard time with this.
And to help protect the residents, we also want to protect them inside of our commercial developments. And by doing that, we would like to, you know, to have the best and safest alignment in that area throughout the whole development, not just one aspect of it. By changing the one aspect of it, yes, you might benefit the Route 20 slightly, but you decrease the safety inside of the parking area. To come out and make it an even safe transition thoroughly, is to have the driveway lined up in the middle and lined up with the driveway across the street.
I just want to clarify one thing. We're having a problem with this because we do feel it's a safety issue with the residents, as it is now. Please, don't ever say we're not considering about the, the residents of this town.
No, I do not want to imply that at all. But I also want you to realize that we do have the safety for the residents in town in our mind, too. We're not, we're not pushing for something because we believe that it's okay. We believe that it is a safe condition. We would not want to jeopardize anybody's safety at all.
Adam, do you want to make a comment?
I have a couple of general comments, and then I, I have a couple of general concerns. The, the comment about turning right onto Route 20, turning left into the site, and making that an easier transition so that we're not backing out onto Route 20. In all of our discussions amongst staff in town, we felt that by creating the circuitous movement on the site, you're actually creating the potential for additional stacking on South Street of people trying to take the left in. Because if you look at the plan that you have in front of you of, of the twenty-foot offset, when someone's exiting the site, they're forced to come from the drive aisle, navigate left, navigate, navigate right to square up to South Street. So, if there's two people in the queue to exit South Street, you're effectively blocking access to the pumps and the main parking area within the site. So thus, the first person to turn in is stuck. They're stuck waiting for that queue to pull out of South Street, thus creating a, a larger queue onto South Street. Whereas the original proposal has a straight line from South Street into the site, it creates a large stacking area for cars trying to get out, and it creates unfettered movement for cars coming in. So, I, I think that there's, there's no, yes, this is the best answer, but we, as staff, felt that that created the least burdensome situation on the site and on the intersection of South Street. So, I, I think that that's where we were coming from in our discussions amongst the staff in town. My, my second concern is that by addressing only the intersection with the street, you're forcing the hand of the planning board. Additionally, the special permit that they've applied for is an aquifer special permit. The approval criteria are outlined in the memo that I sent you, under 43723, and none of those speak to access or to movement. And I, I understand your position that 43721 talks about inclusion of all of the application material. It does not speak to the approval criteria.
Yeah, it's not inclusion. Actually, it doesn't rate inclusion is, is the aquifer special permit is in addition.
It says, "In addition to the standard requirements for special permit applications."
Right.
It says nothing to criteria. It outlines the approval criteria under 43723.
Well, an application for special permit has to go through the nine point.
And my concern is that this takes away the planning board's charge. Because by, by creating a plan that is tied to access, tying the special permit to that access, you eliminate the planning board's ability to adjudicate their charge of adequate access to the site, adequate movement through the site, by forcing them to accept what they, and I don't, they've, they've had discussions, they haven't come down firm on one or the other, but you may force them to take a plan that they may feel is not the best plan that they were presented. So, I, I want to just register my concern on the record, and I know that you have the letter, but this is a, an on-the-record statement by myself.
I, I understand that. I mean, I've seen plans that they've put forward that actually we've, were, didn't coincide with what we were putting forward.
Correct.
On, on other issues as far as drainage.
And, and the zoning board is, is always welcome to submit, comment, and report. They take all input very seriously. And I, I know that in the past, the two boards may have not always seen eye to eye. There has been some change in both boards. I think that new blood is probably hopefully going to make this relationship work a little bit better. And I would like to see us, the boards, not both put their own stamp on things, but work to collaboratively design projects. And I think that this is an opportunity for the two to do that. And, and I'm concerned that it, it may, it may not work out that way.
And that was part of the problems of which comes first. It, maybe if we had an approved plan by the planning board already set before us, with, with their reasons and things like that, that might, might have been the way to go. But we, we always run into, well, it's subject to.
Unfortunately, the way that the bylaws read site plan is based on the issuance of a variance or special permit in many cases. So thus, it, it may be a preemptive act by the planning board to approve a plan. And because the planning board has some flexibility in when they approve things, certain things it wouldn't make sense to approve a site plan for because they require a use special permit. And approving the site plan is, you know, putting the cart before the horse and spending the money on something that, that may be for naught if this board feels that it's not an appropriate use. So, in my time here, I've worked with applicants to send them through the zoning process prior to planning to ensure that what planning is looking for is actually uses that are acceptable and approved through this board.
We've got a little problem with, with the way everything reads, I, I think, and with this works.
And, and I mean, it's a systemic problem with the bylaws.
Because as you said, you don't want us to impede what they can do, and by the same, by the same reason, we don't want them to impede what we, we, we feel we should look at.
And, and believe me, I, I fully understand and respect that. And I think that in the instance of aquifer special permit specifically, you know, use special permits, you know, access and stuff, that is important because it goes to the heart of the use. An aquifer special permit, the intent of the bylaw is wholly for the protection of drinking water and the assurance that uses are not going to contaminate the water supply that, that the residents of the town use, and, and the businesses, and, and everybody who visits. So, that's, that's where my concern comes. If, if they were here for a use special permit, talk, you know, I, I think access is a great thing to, to hang on a use special permit because they're intertwined so closely. With, with an environmental permit such as this, it, it gives me pause and concern as, as a professional planner. And it, and I don't, I don't want this to be territorial or, or anything like that. And it, ultimately, it comes off that way because that, that's, that's the language that we're stuck looking at. And again, as I said-
And just historically, whenever special permit, and it didn't matter what type of special permit it was, the special permit criteria this board always put first.
Correct.
And then, and if an overlay special permit, that is in addition to, as well as, as the original, what's, what's in nine point three.
And, and I would submit that, I mean, you've been on this board for fifteen, eighteen years, something like that. I, I would submit that the staff guidance to this board through that time period may have been moderate to lacking at times.
We've had some great people on the board.
No, no, and, and I'm not saying the board. I'm, I'm saying the, the staff support and, and the, the actual interpretive aspect from the town side, not from, not from the members of the board. And I think that that often, and it, it happened at the planning board at times as well in the past, it, it often leaves boards in a position where they're left to look at things, and there may not always be a consistent view of things over time because of changing personalities, changing situations, changing, just, just change over time. And I think that going forward, we need to look at being consistent and, and reasonable over time. And I think that holding site layout as part of an aquifer special permit, not in reference to collection of stormwater or prevention of environmental damage, may be detrimental going forward. And again, my, my argument is necessary, isn't necessarily against this board or the members of this board. The bylaws is a systemic problem. And the task of rewriting and altering the bylaws in their entirety is enormous. So, going forward, it's something that we have to look at. But I guess I'm looking for some sort of agreement and cooperation amongst the boards. And, and unfortunately, it's wrapped in the cloak of, of a single development.
Again, I think the only intent this board was to try, we saw an opportunity to make that situation better, okay, as far as that intersection. And, and clearly, that, that was it. And it was merely a suggestion, uh-
Sure.
That we, when you buy excess land, and you have the opportunity to move that, that driveway, I'm still not convinced why you couldn't move it to the bottom. And I know it's, it's a harder turn.
Not either.
I don't know why it's even that much of a hard turn to make. It looks like you can, you can certainly maneuver a car and make a left-hand turn there to, but again, that's just my opinion.
And I, I don't, you know, that's not-
But, and that was just something we threw out there to, to look at. To, to, it's a great, it's a great store. I mean, we all love it. But there's been a problem with the intersection.
And I think a lot of, the intersection is sort of what it is. And it, through, through the traffic engineer study, it functions at a level B, which is, which is a pretty good functioning intersection on a, on a state-numbered route with, with a traffic light. The issue with the driveway currently is, in, from my opinion and my discussions with, with the engineers that I've spoken with, it's site distance and geometry. And both of those things are being corrected through this plan. So, it-
Which plan?
The original plan.
The original plan?
Well, because the geometry now is, is such that pulling square to South Street is, it's an abysmal mess for, for anybody who's not hugging the curb and trying to, to square up. And the site distance, those trees and, and the spindly, bushy things, whatever they happen to be, are, per the plan, scheduled to be removed and replaced with sidewalk and landscaping that is essentially grass, if, if I'm not mistaken. So, that gives you, and I, I go to that, that, that store quite often. And my issue coming back to Town Hall is you really just have to throw yourself out there.
Exactly.
Because you can't see what's coming from the left. And so, being able to see from the left is going to increase safety at that intersection.
And, you know, I come out of there, I have to make a right, and sometimes, I mean, you just can't because it's, the, the cars are queued past the driveway. So, that's the only reason for this board to suggest possibly moving it back, so more cars, less queuing.
But I think that that's a problem that, that happens with many intersections and, and access.
Well, it's only because it's so close to, to Route 20. I mean, Route 20 is a, is a, Route 20 is a, is a highway that's known around the country.
Busy road.
You know, and everyone who lives in this town knows what Route 20 is. It's, it's, you know, when I, my son got his license, the worst thing I feared was he's going to actually have to drive on Route 20, okay, and maneuver it, because it's just dangerous. And again, I can't tell you how many times I've been in, in just sitting there at these intersections because queuing has stopped from so many curb cuts, you can't move. Someone's going to make a left or a right on, it's worse on the other side. And I know you say the planning board, you know, does this, but the planning board has about as much expertise as we do. They're not any, they're not engineers.
I agree, and I'm, I'm not saying that they are.
They're common people like us. I mean, we can look at the curb that they put at, at CVS and on that road, that has just caused havoc there. And that was something, hey, they thought it was a great idea.
And again, I'll, I'll go back to personalities and staff at the time. That, that was at a time when there was not a town planner on staff, and the planning board was left to do as they chose. And, and I'm not saying that that makes it, it good or bad. I'm just saying that, you know, we're trying to establish a reasonable procedure and reasonable roles for, at least from my perspective, for, for the planning board. And I, this board is, is sort of an outlier in, in the way that, that it works because it's appointed board by the selectmen. And that's, you know, a little bit different than, than everybody else. And I guess I'm, I'm just-
Well, we're meant to be autonomous.
Well, I'm sorry?
It's meant to be autonomous.
Yeah, and I'm, and, and I'm not saying that that's a bad thing. I'm just saying that it, you know, I have a lot less input with, with the way that you operate, but I'm looking for some reasonable consideration between myself and yourself. I know Nick has worked well with you. And, and then extend that to the planning board. And, and, you know, in a case like this, perhaps it's something we can start looking at having joint meetings for developments of this manner. But, you know, that's something that we should talk about offline.
No, I, no, I definitely understand. I mean, I, I guess basically, you know, whenever there's a development, something's added, we, we look to get benefits.
Correct.
Not just, you know, tax. We, we look to get benefits to making improvement on, in the, in the local areas, which, you know, usually, we, we, we're pretty successful at doing that. And we were hoping just to make a benefit here. Then that's basically, I think, our intent, not to stop this development at all.
No, no, and I don't, I don't think that you're trying to stop it. And again, my concern is that, that the benefit that you gain in a single stacking spot is going to be offset by a detraction in inability to easily navigate into the site and additional stacking on South Street from people turning right trying to turn left. And it's one of those things that it looks great on paper, conceptually, it's great. And in six or eight months, a year, people are going to go, you know, every time I go here, it's a pain. Why did they ever let them build it like this? And, and oftentimes, it happens to everybody. And I, I'm, I just don't want that to happen to this because it is such a visible site. It's a site that has a lot of traffic, and, and it has the potential to, to help increase the visibility of that corner and dress up perhaps other businesses along there.
Can I make a few comments and ask some questions?
Sure, John, please.
I've heard a bunch of things. I've heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, everyone out there. I'm not an engineer, certainly. So, I'll, I'll give you guys, the engineering is correct and the best and all that, because I don't know any better, frankly. I heard that twenty feet is approximately one car length. Is that correct? That's about how much you gain? I've also heard, if I'm correct, that the, moving this curb cut as you've done, you're now starting to balance the safety of the folks and the traffic movement in the parking lot itself. Am I correct so far?
Yes.
I've also heard someone say that people get used to new traffic patterns. So, why not just put up a white stripe across the road with a, "Please do not block the intersection" sign? intersection" sign? And maybe, I pay attention to those, now, people still run red lights, of course, but if the original plan was the best plan, and now you're starting to make compromises on safety, you're only gaining one car length, why not do that? It's cheap, it's simple, and if people do get used to the traffic patterns, you know, eventually, I think that... The basic problem is people block the driveway. That's, so that's what you have to eliminate. I don't think, you know, any give on safety is not acceptable, in my opinion. And again, you guys, the engineers, I'll take your word for it, if that's going to be the case. So, why not make an effort to try to stop people from blocking the intersection?
Perfect sense. We would certainly be willing to put a stripe out there and sign and...
I'm assuming Cumberland Farms would pay for the sign if need be.
We could find the money.
And the paint to put the stripe on the road.
We could find the money, yes.
It's not perfect.
Who's going to enforce it, though? Who's going to enforce it?
I'm going to go run 10 red lights, and I'm not going to get a ticket, I bet, once, you know. At some point, you gotta, you can't legislate and put, people are going to do what they want.
I'm sorry, some people do that naturally, with a little help of a stripe and a sign. You'll get more people doing it. It's not going to be a guarantee, but it certainly, I can see how that would be a help, for sure. And I do, I know you've had your hand up. I wanted to reiterate, if the idea was to make the site safer, I do want to accentuate, you know, no trucks on South, no fuel trucks that way. We do believe that what we've got, better visibility, no trucks, we are certainly making an improvement.
Unfortunately, I'm not going to refer to John, what he's just said. There's been a sign there, no left turn for trucks since, it's been there forever.
Well, we control the trucks. So, we can't prevent every truck from doing it, but we know what it is now. Everybody, every truck that goes there, many trucks that go there go through South Street right now. So, we know we're going to have a positive effect on that. We know that we're going to have a positive effect in many other areas. To your point, one car, two cars, if it is, as you say, that there's a big queuing problem there, it doesn't really matter whether it's 20 feet, 40 feet, or 80 feet. But what we're trying to do is balance all the issues. And if a stripe and a sign will help in that regard, we're happy to do it. I'm sorry, you've had your hand up for about a half an hour.
I just disagree with it. I still think it needs to be moved back.
I mean, again, and I'm just going to go for mine. My issue wasn't just the egress just right there, it was the, once the queuing, someone making a left backed up to Route 20, and that causes the issue. It's not exactly whatever goes on on South Street. It's the first car that turns right, and that's a busy intersection for the town because it cuts through into the main section of town. It's also used as a cut-through all the way to 12, okay, at that point. It's a busy, so you can have just one person wanting to go into Cumberland Farms, stop and waiting, and people just want to keep going from making their right, and they can't pass.
But it's a problem now, and...
Right, and we were hoping that with the addition of additional lot, that you were going to buy that, and you could actually make this a little better.
Extend it.
We've solved as many problems as we can, given the shape of the lot, and, you know, it is what it is. We, you know, we've looked at it 10 ways to Sunday.
Okay.
I mean, I think we've heard a lot of good testimony about the benefits of moving the entrance to the north, but we also heard a lot of good testimony about maybe why the existing entrance is pretty good. I mean, we've heard from a lot of different groups. I mean, I'd be comfortable going with the original plan. You know, we did put our concern about moving it back, but, I mean, I do think if we move it too far to the north, you're going to, it's almost like the Dunkin' Donuts, you're going to drive all the traffic coming in into the lot, and then you're going to, it's going to be pretty unsafe for the pedestrians. I mean, we...
I mean, it's not ideal even with the current situation with parking and, you know, facing now into there, but it is what it is. They're going to control their own destiny inside their own property.
It would have been great.
My concern was outside the property.
Right.
That's my concern, too.
Can we just say that, no, I just checked again with Paul. We, notwithstanding the objections of the planning board and so forth, we presented the 20-foot plan for you to look at as an alternative. We've told you which one we prefer, but we want you to, want to be clear that we've heard the planning board, and we are kind of in between the two. We've suggested the 20-foot, not out of just, hey, this is just for fun. So, we have suggested that as an alternative for this particular board. I just wanted to make that clear, in case it's not clear.
And again, we don't want to put you in odds with the planning board because, I mean, they're going to look at site plan. I mean, we don't always agree, naturally, but again, they have their opinions on what's in, we've lived with those decisions for a long time here.
We wanted to make it clear that if it's a choice between a no and a yes, then the 20 feet is acceptable to Cumberland Farms. We know there are objections from other people, but, you know, I've been in front of boards that talked, wanted to have certain colors on top of a roof and what have you. That have nothing to do with aquifer protection. So, this isn't court. We're here, you want to talk about Kevin Garnett, we'll talk about Kevin Garnett. So, if you want to talk about the driveway, that's what we're here for. So, we're offering you a choice. We think it's, we have a preference, but we're offering this board a choice.
Does the board feel that the 20 feet is a fair compromise compared to the original plan?
I don't think the vote of the board would, but...
I think the one-car difference you gain out of 20 feet is not going to make a difference at all. It's not going to solve the problem of people blocking the driveway to prevent people from making a left. That's what you have to try to do something about. You could put that 60 feet back, and there's no guarantee that enough cars aren't going to get stuck there because someone is blocking the driveway. I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is trying to stop people somehow from blocking the driveway to begin with. Which is impossible to do. But a sign and a stripe would be better than nothing.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I mean, the town has the ability to put that stripe in either way because it's going to be on town road. So...
I mean, we could beat it to death, but I mean, it seems like it's a fair compromise.
Again, you have to give some credence to the engineers, and, you know, they know more than I do, certainly, about all this and safety factors. And now that we're starting to lessen the safety in favor of people sitting in their cars for less time, I don't think that's acceptable.
Well, as a resident, I've been here 30 years, and I know that's been a problem ever since then. And I know that some of the officials that are here don't even belong in this town and probably don't even go down here that often. I know it's a bad intersection, and you're asking me to say to my, the people that I represent in this town, to say, well, this is it. I don't feel comfortable with that. And I can't do that.
Well, I've been here four years, and I agree with you. It's a terrible intersection, and I know that happens.
But if we can make it better by moving it, which I do believe, to help them, that's my stance.
But my point is that it appears from the engineering and everything we've heard that this is the best they can do. And the best they can do to satisfy us is leading to trade-offs that I personally don't think are necessary or acceptable.
That's your opinion.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, well, is there any comment from the audience? Anybody else like to make a comment on this? And there are, I guess there's no butters for this hearing? Okay. Okay, well, here's what I'd like to do. I think we'll take a vote, but I'm not going to close the meeting, just in case we have to get more input on something. But I would like to take, if there's a motion, I'd like to hear it, and...
I'll make a motion if you give me a little help on exactly how to word it.
You have to make the motion, so I'll let you work it out. Go ahead.
My motion would be that we approve the special permit, and I'm not sure what map we refer to, but with the 20-foot movement off the original...
It would be Sheet 3 of the...
Sheet 3.
Site plan layout dated 9/13/12.
Of the site layout plan dated 9/13/12.
Is that correct?
Second plan.
I think he's talking about the second plan. The revisions there? See the dates?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, so it would be, the revisions dated January 18, 2013, would be my motion.
Second.
We have a motion to second? Any more discussion on it?
The only thing I'd like to say, I'm glad that the motion was for the second plan and not the first one, because I would not vote for the first plan. I don't agree with the second plan as a whole, but I think it's a movement to make it better. So, I would vote in favor of it, only because it is a second plan, and it gives you that extra footage.
Now, I just want to ask one question. Did the planning board look at the second plan? Okay, and they were okay with it? That's all, I don't want to, you know, okay a plan or vote on the plan.
They did see it.
Either way.
They didn't come down firmly, one way or the other.
Okay.
They said that they would look at the merits of whatever plan came before them.
Sure.
Again, you know, professionally and through staff, our recommendation was the original plan.
Okay.
Which I disagree with.
Okay, we have the motion. And a second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Still carries, 4 to 1. Special permit's approved. Okay, any motion to close the hearing then? Oh, add them before we close it. That's why I didn't close.
Before you close the hearing...
I wanted to make sure we can hear.
Your motion was only to approve the special permit. I know that there's generally standard aquifer conditions.
Well...
So, it's an unconditioned motion, is what was just approved.
Well, with the, with the, no, he made a motion referring to the revisions of the plan.
Correct, but there's no conditions on that motion, other than that it be that plan.
As, yeah, well, the plan indicates the driveway.
Correct, and I'm not arguing about the layout.
All right.
We're talking about aquifer conditions.
I know that generally, there are conditions attached to aquifer special permits.
Right, there's always aquifer conditions with...
But that was not the motion.
Okay.
So, what I'm saying is that this board needs to include those conditions in the motion, or they cannot be included in the decision.
Okay.
I believe that there's been, there was a problem with that once before with a separate project.
Right, okay. So, you want to amend that?
The one who made the motion...
The white stripe in the sign, or should that be in there, too?
Actually, yeah, there was a, there was some talk about, but, see, that's town property. We can't force, we can't, we can't force them to put something on a public road, as far as a sign or striping, correct? I mean, we can...
I don't know if you can. The planning board can certainly include that as a requirement or condition.
Okay.
And I do have a note that that was discussed, and I will bring that to the board. I don't think that Cumberland Farms is necessarily opposed to that.
No, it actually helped.
And especially, especially, you know, the town can require, they can't come in and say, we're just going to do this, without the town saying, okay.
Okay.
I was just going to say that a condition I typically see is that the applicant will put a stripe on the road and a sign that says, please stop at the driveway, please stop at the driveway entrance, provided that the local town officials approve.
Right, okay.
Okay, so that if we can't just run out and do it, then the town officials have to approve it.
Okay, would you like to amend your...
Sure, I'll amend my motion to include the aquifer.
Conditions?
Conditions.
And the stripe?
And the stripe.
And the stripe.
The sign.
The sign.
Sign and a stripe.
Okay, now we have this amended motion. We'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Still stand opposed.
Okay.
If I may have a moment, when you think it's appropriate to discuss why, but...
Well, I mean, we're going to close after this, so...
Okay. I think the reason I, I'm certainly for the project. I think it's a great opportunity for the town. I think that we've spent enough time discussing the curb cuts, this type of thing. I think there are other things within the plan. Specifically, the reason why I said no is because I tend to doubt a full-size tractor-trailer full of fuel being able to make that swing with cars at the parking lot.
Even that, then we're stepping more on the toes of the plan.
And I know what we are. And I also think, you know, we haven't discussed that dumpsters are close to a residential neighborhood, and that's the reason I said no. Otherwise, I am for the project.
Okay, yeah, and under the, kind of like the guidelines even of special permit, I think site plan really does address everything, including some of what we looked at. Absolutely, absolutely. So, I think hindering them even more, I, you know, that's why I'm voting for this.
I certainly don't want to hinder them. I would like to move forward with it.
Well, the vote was 4 to 1, so it passes. I appreciate your concerns. Thanks for the comments, Bob. Okay, motion to close? Wait a minute, before I close, I don't know if you have... Okay, motion to close?
Make a motion to close.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. You're going to screw it up.
Okay. Okay, this will be the motion to open the 7:45 hearing. It's Alpesh A. Patel of Southbridge, Mass., requesting a special permit under Section 8.2.2 of the urban zoning bylaws for the change of one non-conforming use, a catering shop to another non-conforming use, a convenience store on the property located at 143 Oxford Street North, Auburn, Mass., Route 10, Part Lady 3. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, step up to the, and give your name, please.
My name is Alpesh Patel from Southbridge, Mass. I wanted to try to open up the convenience store on Oxford Street. This is my representative, Henry.
Okay.
And I'm attorney, Henry Simonelli, also from Southbridge, representing him on the petition.
Okay, why don't you tell us exactly what you're going to be putting in there?
Well, he's going to put in a conventional convenience store where there had previously been a catering business. There'll be no change to the structure, it'll be the same spot that was occupied. The only thing he's going to do is, there was a garage door in the back that he's going to make into just a regular swing door, and that would be the only thing that he would be changing about it.
Are there still the apartments up top?
I didn't hear.
Are there still apartments up top?
Yeah, there are three apartments up there. Whether they're occupied or not, I can't tell you. Unfortunately, the owner of the building, I asked him if he could be here to field such questions, but it's school vacation week, and he had plans with his family, so he's... But there are three apartments, residential units. The business, the area in which this building exists is predominantly business, was formerly a business zone, and it was actually originally built for, I believe it was a glass company that had put the building up initially. And in fact, those apartments didn't even exist at that time. It was strictly a business use of the premises, then the apartments were added later. As you drive down the street, as you can see from the Exhibit B that I included, which is from the Mass GIS, it's just a satellite shot. You can see, and if you're familiar with the area anyway, you know that there's, it's predominantly a business area, at least in that section. There's several businesses that I've been able to spot in the immediate vicinity, which I've cited in my brief. So, with respect to the factors under...
And you're in two aquifer zones?
I'm sorry?
Are you in two aquifer zones there?
Um, yeah, actually, it actually, the building itself is in one, from what I understand of how I read that overlay, it kind of just cuts across the corner of the land. So, the building is in one zone. I believe that's in a less restrictive zone, and then the rest of the properties in the more restrictive zone. So, they deem the whole property to be in the two zones. I had asked for an opinion as to what zone it was in, and that's the opinion that was rendered, that it was in both, two and three.
Yeah, it actually, there are portions of it that do fall in both zones.
Now, I was just asking, because I was wondering on parking and impervious there, how it's going to work.
Well, I actually looked at it, the previous plan that was submitted for the revision. We have the April 9, 2001 plan that we looked at. Right there, it says for the catering business, eight spaces required. I went through the zoning bylaw, and it's actually eight spaces would be required for the convenience store. So, we have a one-to-one, they wouldn't need any additional parking from what was required for the catering business.
Okay, so they don't need 10 for the convenience store?
No.
Is it 180, one for every 180 feet?
I'm basing it on the 1,500 square feet, correct?
Right, 1,500 square feet. Right, 1,500 square feet.
Yes, so based on that, it required 8.33. So, it wasn't 8.5.
Right, 8... You got your calculator there just for a second? And then they require for the one employ... Or at least employee for the maximum amount, but there's only gonna be one employee?
Correct.
Can you just put that...
At any one time.
Divide it by 180. 1,500 by 180. 8.33. So, and one employee, so that makes... Basically, we kind of rounded it up to 10, right? Is that what you did?
Well, no, I said it was even. Eight to eight.
What about the employee?
I didn't round up.
It's plus employee, correct?
Plus employee, so then it would be nine.
Nine. And that's why I was curious on the upper for each residential unit requires two?
Well, that's in the new one. When this was approved, I don't know if two was required at that time. I would have to go back through the old decisions.
And now we're changing the nonconforming use and they're supposed to comply with the new bylaws when you do that.
Correct, but we would only apply that to the use that's coming in as nonconforming. The ones that are existing would stay with what they have. So, if the apartments were put in and only required to have one parking space per each, then we would only count one parking space per each. However, we would make the new nonconforming use comply with what the required parking would be, which would be nine as we looked at. But if the apartments only required three to begin with for three apartments, then we can't retroactively go back and say, now you require two.
Do you know what they required at the...
I have not. I have not seen. I've gotta look for those decisions. I haven't been able to go through the file and the paperwork to find out.
So, I remember doing the barber shop, but not the apartments up top, so I can't, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know. So, I mean, what do we go on since it's not known?
Correct. And at that point, that's more research than I can do.
Yeah.
If that's more information that the board needs to make their decision, then I would be happy to go back and look through our records to see if I can dig that out.
Do you know what the barber shop required?
No. Like I said, this is the only plan that I've seen. And right now, we're in the process of reorganizing our files. So, looking for some of these records takes a little bit more time than...
I mean, I just... It's just an estimate. I mean, he might have... I think he has two chairs there. So, I'm a... Three?
Three chairs.
Okay, you got your... I never got my hair cut.
I got three chairs, three employees, and there's generally at least four or five people in there at a time.
So, but three chairs, three employees. So, at that point, he's required to have, you know, if we... Well, I can't say what he would be required to have. I would have to look back at the decision.
Well, you...
I could make it for what we require now, but I would have to see what he was...
I was trying to go through this and trying to come up with something, you know. I didn't know. I was basing it on two, but if there's three, I'm gonna assume a head and each chair to be cut.
Yeah, so we're saying six parking spaces.
Six.
For that, three for the apartments if needed. If we went up to two, now we're looking at 12 and eight.
Six, 12.
So, now we're going to 20 spaces.
He has, what, 16?
So, and like I said...
That's what I was wondering about the back, if it's in the aquifer, because you can't park technically unpaved in the aquifer.
Well, also, if I could point out, if it may ease your concern, the plan as it was posited shows on the left, on the north side of the property, shows five spots. But as you can see from the satellite photo, they actually have seven spots on that side. So, they actually have two additional spots from what the plan had as it was approved initially.
I mean, unfortunately, I'm not gonna go with the satellite. I'm gonna go with the plan that you have here before us. I just wanted to make sure because a convenience store is gonna... A catering is gonna get more traffic. It's gonna have more people.
Correct. And we can look and see what the parking requirements were. And you know, as a condition for approval, we can request for an updated survey so we can determine exactly how many parking spaces are there.
I mean, there's plenty of room in the back that they could park a spot. I mean, it looks like there's ample room there. I just...
Yeah. No, and like I said, I'm looking at the same plan you have. So, I mean, if the board wishes, you know, we can make it a condition that an updated survey be done so that we know exactly what exists on that site.
Well, I mean, as long as you make your determination on what they need for parking, I mean, we're good with that. I mean, I was just doing my quick little math and it was around 20 or 22 or whatever.
Well, correct. And also, but with this survey, I mean, we're looking at this and we're saying the required parking spaces as done by the survey are 17, and they're only showing 15 on the site. So, I would need an updated survey anyways to know that they conform with the parking.
Okay.
The... So, with respect to the parking, I do agree that the uses that were in existence prior should go on whatever the prior bylaw was. And if we're applying just on the special permit, we would only be updating the new use.
Yes.
Yeah, but we still don't know what the apartments were.
Correct. The question that we're having is we don't... One, I will look into it to find out what was approved for the original parking requirements.
Okay.
But also, we don't know what currently exists for parking on the site because we're looking at a plan from 2001.
That's right.
Apparently, you're telling us that there were changes. So, we don't know what currently exists on the parking, to know if you even meet the parking requirements once we determine what they are.
Okay.
I mean, my only concern was that because, you know, in more of intense use with the convenience store that you have parking and, you know, I just don't know... I can't... I don't have the information before me exactly what you required. So, I know how the board feels, but please comment.
No, I agree. Parking is the biggest thing. And if we can condition that in with it, then...
I don't know how we're gonna... We're really not supposed to make a finding that's conditioned on... Especially on something major as this to another board or another... We have to make...
Well, we can... Well, we don't have the information, so I'd ask...
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would like to recommend to the board not to make a decision contingent upon getting a survey done. That's a significant...
Yeah, absolutely. So, I would assume that they're going to ask for a continuance since we really don't have adequate information here to...
I will say, if it helps, you know, in 01, there was no mention of... In reviewing the decision, there was no mention of the parking being an issue as the plan was presented. So, but as I showed you on the satellite photo, it does show different parking than what the plan said. So, understandably, it may make some sense to update that.
Well, I think we need to determine... I mean, the building inspector will determine how many real parking spaces you'll need and then go from there. And I mean, I don't know if the owner is willing to even, you know, add spaces in the back, but it'd probably be, depending on where he is on the aquifer, he'll have to do some paving, but...
Sure, unless there's already enough there.
Correct. And like we said, an updated survey to show exactly what's existing on site is required because the plan you submitted is from 2001.
That's right.
And I understand you're saying if we look at the satellite photos, but satellite photos change over time. We don't know when it was taken, you know.
This was from 2008. It's actually Mass GIS, so it's the official state satellite for...
Correct. And we're in 2013 now, so we've had another five years.
That's true.
So, you may gain another two parking spaces.
Yeah.
Who knows?
Exactly.
Well, that may make some sense then if we put it on. But if there are any other issues, is that... Would that make sense to deal with that now or is that...
Well, I don't really have any other issues. I mean, it's the space has been there. You're not really adding space.
Exactly.
And you really haven't... I don't really see any other issues, just as long as you...
Sufficient parking.
Sufficient parking, you should be good.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Okay, so is there a motion to continue us to our next meeting?
I'll make the motion to continue our next meeting.
Okay, we will put this possibly at 7:15 then because we have... Well, the first one was another continued there.
Seven, yep.
Seven?
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Trying to think what year we... I did the barber shop. Yeah, it was a long time. Okay, any discussion that we want to go? Let's do the minutes. Anybody have any problems with the minutes from last meeting? No? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve them, the minutes.
Okay, we have a second?
Last meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any business anyone wants to discuss? I know you were... I sent everyone the letter kind of in response to the original... I mean, historically, that's why I wanted everyone to look at it. Historically, the aquifer overlay, again, that's what it is. It's an overlay to... And that conditions for the special permit, and it specifically was worded that it's... Those aquifer special permit conditions are in addition to the original criteria for special permits. That's why I, you know, the board always felt we had to look at safety on almost at any circumstance. And in the essence, what you were bringing up about the safety, even on the internal part, I mean, sure, technically, using that, we probably... We could've. But I mean, the planning board looks at that. They're pretty good at that.
Oh, no question.
Safety-wise. I'm confident in that. I wasn't as confident on curb cuts because there are curb cuts and things that are done that are just...
And I was gonna say, and it's not just this town. If you go up and down, you know, every state in the East Coast.
I bring people up from the first state. I bring up the Kelly Square for the first time. And I had one guy, he just screamed as he went through there. And he goes, who did this? Well, you know, engineers there. They put this. This was a beautiful thing.
Yeah, and I agree with the board. I understand where you're coming from. I mean, when we do get applications like this, this is the opportunity to fix mistakes.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping for something.
And that's... And, you know, usually some things are straightforward as to, yes, this is the best decision. Sometimes we come up with a case like this where we have differing opinions and hopefully we end up on the, you know, the best solution for everybody.
When Sovereign Bank went on the corner of Millbury Street, I mean, they... We got a quarter of a million dollars out of the white and 20, and you know, nice, easy right turn. It was beautiful.
You know, my concern was with the trailer truck, as she had mentioned. And I look at the scale and she showed... The drawing showed less than 40 feet.
Yeah, planning board is really good at that. They have their templates. I mean, they're good at that. I have no problem with that.
Well, my thing is the likelihood of a spill over an aquifer. That's why I said we haven't discussed that part of it yet. And that was my concern. Otherwise, I love the project. I think it's gonna be fantastic for the town. It's just that I saw the possibility of what if there's a spill over the aquifer?
Oh, yeah. Now, I mean, that's always a concern, but you know, I mean, the engineering, I think that got thoroughly reviewed and then, you know, they're pretty good with that.
Absolutely.
Wayne, did you want to...
The only thing I have to say is I read that letter from Adam Bernie that he has sent to you. And I was gonna ask tonight at this meeting to respond to it because I was very disappointed in the way he interpreted the zoning on that issue.
No, I think we did and we switched some...
But can I finish, please? But I just want to say I'm glad you did respond to it and corrected. And now that you had the little discussion tonight, you know, hopefully we will be able to work together. But things like that don't need to happen.
No, I agree.
Especially when the zoning board was right.
Well, you know, I mean, interpretations of things, that's why there's courts, that's why there's a board of appeals. I mean, it's why we're here. But most of the time, everything goes through smoothly. I mean, we have... This wasn't a big... I don't think it was a major, you know...
Oh, no.
At all.
No, considering we didn't go through all the other stuff, you know, they did very well with the project.
We always try to extract the benefit for the town, you know.
No, and agreeing rightly so. I mean, I believe that the boards are here to protect the best interests of the residents. And I believe that you guys fulfill that charge.